All right, it is 7:01 and we're going to call this work session for the Board of Commissioners to order. If you would do a roll call for Coach.
We'll do it. President Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Manchin.
Here.
Mr. Lott.
Yes.
Commissioner Neuer.
Hello.
Public Works Director Darrell Bond.
Here.
Police Chief David First. Your Counselor John Hudson here.
All right, we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance.
In the United States of America and in due republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move right into review of the agenda. Coach Hudson, if you can go over that for us?
Will do. Under our whole business, I have A, shared party agreements Trinity Church for discussion, B, Marbor Town Roads for discussion, C, ordinance 2023-10, property standards for discussion, D, annexation for discussion. Under line 7, new business, I have A, Vision Action Plan for discussion, B, legal RFP responses for discussion, C, reading of Municipal Government Works' proclamation, and then I have administrative updates.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Right, hearing none. We'll move into our first order of business. I do have to let you know that we do have not heard back from Trinity Church. It's still with their lawyer. So we don't really have anything new, but if there's any discussion from the board, do that, otherwise we can move on to the next item. Hearing no discussion, we will push this item to the next meeting and move on to Marbor Town Roads. I do not have any new information on that either. Is there any more discussion on that? So hearing no discussion, we will move on to ordinance 2023-10, property standards. I'm not going to necessarily ask you to read it into the record, Coach Hudson, but if you could kind of give an overview. If possible, flip away to the attorney's comment.
Okay. Well, the property standards, when it's 2023-10, it is ordinance for the company, company has to update its town property standards. Property standards will follow those that are in George's County, and enforcement would be initially done by the town before elevating non-compliant property into George's. We did reach out to town attorney Kevin Best. We did ask what can be used to say that we can call the county to enforce county code when we have exhausted on what you said. And the answer is that he provided to us to adopt the county code provisions by reference to your property standards ordinance. Like, you cannot generally call the county to enforce the county code in lieu of their own, when you feel you have exhausted your property standards. You perceive the similar county ordinance, and the county essentially loses jurisdiction. Section 4-111 of the Local Government Code. You cannot have two local property standards enforcement into entities in the town. You want the county to enforce residential and commercial property standards in the town, you need to repeal your municipal residential and commercial property standards in the town. Could allow certain aspects of its property standards code to be enforced in the town limits by the county, but you would need to amend your code such that they do not overlap any rights.
So, to some extent, what Kevin and attorney Best is saying is, once we adopt property standards, like, we could adopt property standards that allow for a pollinator garden, and maybe the county doesn't allow you to have a pollinator garden. So he's saying, you know, the county wouldn't be able to enforce its own standards over ours for a pollinator garden. What we're trying to say to him is, we want to be able to call the county if something is beyond what we can handle. And he's saying, then I need to redraft this legislation, if I can summarize that. So, that is the update. I think it kind of pushes things back a little with this because we have to go back and forth with him to figure out how it needs to be redrafted to allow that. Because I do think we have properties that get beyond what we have the capacity to cite with the staff we have and the capacity.
I thought this whole time we were operating under the assumption that the legislation was being drafted with county being a second mechanism. Wasn't that, did I misinterpret that at the beginning of this?
I don't, I know that the attorney watched our last meeting, or the one before that, and then provided this. So, I'm not sure what, I can't, that was my understanding. But I can't say where the...
Well, the reason I say that is because based off of my quick reading of this before here. So it sounds like the two options kind of would be, either we're enforcing for adopting the county code, which is the path we were going down, but then we would be turning over all enforcement capacities to the county, or rubbing the county code, seeing where there are things that we have within the town that are not addressed in the code, and we're creating a separate kind of standalone ordinance that we can enforce for those things. Let's say, for example, the pollinator garden that you mentioned, if that's not in the county code, we are creating a property standard ordinance that includes that, that we're able to enforce. That's what I'm hearing, are the two options?
Yes, and I think the reason we went with the county was because we have residents that are coming in and saying, things are county code violations, and we should be enforcing them. And so it was like, if we just use the county standards, then we don't have that problem. Yes, anyway.
I'm just trying to see through, trying to see through. But, kind of, it ultimately ends up being the mechanism. If we did adopt the county code, turn over the enforcement to the county, I'm not saying that's what I'm advocating, I'm just thinking out loud through this piece. What remedy, or do we, would we have any remedy at that point? One of the things I know that we talked about was having the ability to work with someone who's having some trouble within the town, if they're not able to fix their issue right away or within the standards that the county set. If we go with option A, adopting the county code and turning over enforcement to the county, do we have any remedy of that sort?
No.
Based on my reading, based on the reading of the responses here?
We don't. I mean, the county's not going to necessarily probably come through. They're going to expect us to alert them when there's a code violation. So, we could try to work with them, but if they do come through, and they, once the county cites you, the county cites you, and it's done. So I do think...
But we'd still be doing our own enforcement, and then basically telling the county for them to come out and do enforcement.
Right, that's after we exhaust...
That's what we want, and Kevin's kind of telling us, no. But I think we might have to go back and work with him more to get that to how, rather than no.
Right, because that's what I thought that we said.
Right.
We wanted to give them an opportunity, and then if they didn't do it, asked of them, then we just go to the county and... It was like the last result.
Yes. So, I think this needs to go back to attorney Best and staff, work out whatever details are causing this issue. That sound...
No, it sounds like, yeah. I agree with that.
It sounds right. The question I have is, I know what the certification process is pretty much on hold because of this, so we're still would be pushing that back even further into the year.
Hopefully, definitely need to do a report again, and have it done, play it about another month or so. But hopefully, with the discussion tonight, working with attorney Best, we can probably get what you're looking for. And hopefully, we can get it back sooner rather than later.
My last question would be with the certification piece, since we're delaying once more. Is there a cost to...
Yeah, there should not be, because we, I explained to them that this property standard should have actually done before we actually started the process. Because we really needed, that's the whole of your connectivity to your property standards. That's the main piece that people are going to be looking at when it comes to votes and all of that. So we want to make sure it's exactly what you all want before we actually produce that document. And I will double check with them and work with them to make sure, like, there's no cost.
We might just have to have two voting meetings in January. Okay, so we're in agreement as to the next steps on this. All right, then, we will move on to annexation. I still do not have overnights signed by the other party. To provide, but I'm keeping this on here while I wait. For annexation agreements, how we're trying to find out. When they come in, we will have a process and then vote on that.
There are particular sticking points that's holding them up, or are they just not signed to that?
Some of the parties that are signing the documents are concerned about confidentiality and harassment. And it's hard because they have to be filed with land records, but we have had people report harassment. So, trying to work with those attorneys to see, like, we could file, I think we can preemptively file as long as we get them to agree to, like, the statement, but it's complicating matters, which I think is... Any other questions about annexation? Then we will move on to new business. Jason?
Yes.
Here.
We're going to turn it over to Better City to go over the action plan. Okay. Good evening. Let's see, can you hear me okay?
Hi, Jason.
Hi.
We can.
Excellent.
How are you?
Fantastic, thanks for asking. It's great to be with all of you, to present the action plan. So, the background is, I think all of you are familiar with the vision plan that was created earlier in the year. And part of the process was to say, okay, here's the high-level objectives, which are articulated in the vision plan, and that's really the direction the community wants to go. What does that mean, and what are the next steps? And so we worked closely with the mayor and even some outside partners, and come up with this detailed action plan. And it's important to understand what it is and what it isn't. The action plan signals intent and is directional. So it's saying, here are the items that are encompassed within the vision plan, and here are a series of steps that we anticipate would be necessary to make, to move the ball down the field and to make the action plan successful, or the vision plan. So it's really directional, and it's really signals intent. It's not binding on the town in any way to say, you have to do these, or once you've accepted these, then that's, you know, that's binding. It really is saying, okay, this is the intent of the community to move in these directions, and we think these are the steps. But the reality is, as you go along, things always change, right? And say, oh, we found this other funding source, we're going to pivot and pursue that, or we ran into this roadblock, so therefore, we're not able to do it in this fashion. And so it really just serves as a guideline for staff and for any other people that are working on this vision plan. So here's where we want to end up going, here's where we think what the next steps are. Are there any questions about that? I think to understand that context and the framing is really important. Mary, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I think that captures it.
Okay. I don't really want, unless you feel necessary, I wouldn't necessarily want to bore you with going through detail by detail. You have it there before you. And again, the importance of this is to give staff direction and to signal, you know, here's the perceived or anticipated direction. So, I think it might be best just to talk about those items at a high level and not really get into the details. You can read them for yourselves unless you have specific questions. So, most of these are around the Main Street, the Renaissance of the Main Street in the downtown, and how to specifically achieve that. And so, you know, the first item is the power lines. That was identified as a visual impediment, and really a... It's a signal. It's something that, wait, this isn't a historic town, and it's just a... Something that was identified as, those towns that have very power lines versus towns have power lines that are visible, there's a huge aesthetic difference, right? And so, how do we afford with that? And there's some funding sources to be pursued, and some, you know, a lot of coordination happened, but that's the first one. And then the second one is to explore the Main Street, whether it's possible to have it, so it's one-way traffic, and then to have more on-street parking and widen sidewalks, or if there's other ways to reconfigure it so you have, so you can enlarge the sidewalks. Because at the end, the goal is to create a very walkable environment. A Main Street that just says, that screams, come walk here and sit, and this is the place you wanted to be, into blacks. So to explore those options and work, obviously, it's an M-dot project, so it'd have to be in the coordination of them. The parking is always cited as a challenge, and so to address that in a way that is forward-looking and is comprehensive, that it's part of the whole, is really important. So, when we talk about a walkable downtown, you've got to have a starting point, right? An easy way to park, and then to immediately integrate yourself into the downtown, and have wayfinding, and to know how to get around. And so the parking and the wayfinding are critical components of that. The downtown revitalization, there's a whole bunch to that. So, the bones are fantastic. The structures is a great, cute downtown, nice buildings. So it's how to get to that next step where the buildings are, create density in terms of use. So you have uses, especially on the bottom floors, that are, that have people coming that are synergistic with other uses, and that create foot traffic. And also to make sure that those tenants, the buildings are, we can attract great tenants and great retailers and restaurants and so forth because of the environment. And that's both the physical environment and also the business environment. And so this downtown revitalization comprehends and contemplates a lot of those kinds of changes that establish the Main Street in your downtown as a great place for retailers, for restaurants. I'll stop here. That's the first page. Pause. Any questions or feedback or comments?
Everyone seems good. For you to carry on.
Still good, all right. We talked about the wayfinding piece. I think oftentimes, as a long-term resident, you take things for granted. You know where things are, you know how things work. And so the wayfinding is all about looking at it through the lens of people who are visiting, you know, who are coming here for a court date, or coming here because you've got such a great downtown. And making sure that everywhere they look, they know they're being directed, they're being shown, oh, here's how you park, here's where you park, here's how you access places, here's what's available. And so that becomes a key component of it. The old high school project is obviously up on the hill there, and it's so important to change the uses of the Main Street from offices to retail and to restaurants, and things that have flow and traffic. And so...
Can we lose you? Jason? I did make the note that it's an elementary school. Well, we'll give him a minute to come back in because that is complicated economic development, funding stuff that I cannot wing. He's been saying, could I always, I was going to say, could we pivot, and I could read the Municipal Government Works' proclamation while we're waiting for him to come back? Or is that, is it allowed to go from one item to the other? Well, let's give him, it's only 7:24, we'll give him two minutes.
Jason, you back with us?
Hi, Jason.
I'm so sorry. This seems to be the norm, doesn't it?
We lost you at the old elementary school project.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, apologies. So, the idea is to move as many of the non-synergistic uses, office uses, to an alternative site, and the old high school area would be a great place to do a redevelopment project, where you've got office spaces, and attorneys can move there, and even bring in new attorneys, because it's, you know, it's a great location for attorneys. It's proximate to the courthouses. And then also do housing, so it could meet a couple of needs for the community. So that's what's been identified. We've had some plumeries, talks with the county, and there's interest in pursuing that. And so there's a whole series of action items to make that happen. But that could be extremely synergistic, because you create more density, housing density, and also create openings for retailers, or for buildings along Main Street become retail. And then, once you have the space, then it's about recruiting downtown businesses, and creating the messaging, saying, hey, Upper Marlboro is becoming this. This is the vision. This is the Renaissance plan, and helping people understand why they should be investing in the downtown. And it might include some incentive programs, and definitely some outreach and targeting. The final two are library upgrades. So, you know, obviously, Prince George's County is famous for its libraries, and they've done some great things. And so, helping the library board to understand where Upper Marlboro is going, and what a, you know, what a great opportunity to have with that library right there in the center of it all, and help them catch the vision, and help them, or have them propose how they can make their library a centerpiece of all this, and drive traffic through what they can offer there. And then finally, use the trail network, so creating walkability and connections between the Schoolhouse Pond, the trail network, state trail network, and the communities. So, the idea is, and there's been some work already with sidewalks and so forth, but make it just completely walkable. So, as many communities as possible, you can hop on a bike or walk and be able to enjoy it downtown. So, those are the key, high-level things that form the action items to bring about the vision plan. And then, of course, we have the funding requests from the county with some, you know, specific requests and deliverables. And this is changing. We're looking for sources of revenue from other places. We've been talking to, we've applied for some grants and some other programs to get funding. But also, we feel like having a coherent plan and saying, look, here's the long-term plan, here's how it's going, that we're hoping helps the county to understand, okay, the money we set aside, here's the uses, and here's how it's going to be catalytic for the community. So, that is the, that's the action plan, the rationale behind it. Thoughts or concerns or questions?
You guys have any questions?
Couple of thoughts, a question we may come out of. We like the, some of the language, some of the thought around the school site. One of those is for the library. Have we engaged with them? Do we know what, does the library system have a master plan that involves our library?
So, I met with the library system a couple, probably two months, maybe three ago. They were just finishing an assessment and master plan for the libraries. I believe our library site is, I already in it, but it has not come out, so I don't...
Sure.
Or maybe it has come out. I just need to check.
Sure.
And meet with them again.
Yeah, I didn't mean to get into whatever the details are. I just wondered if they're already going down a path, wanting to make sure that we either dovetail with them, or at least we're a part of the conversation so that it doesn't get left out, because this is a part of the prioritization project here.
Yes, I started that, and I spoke about our end of thing, so we're on that path.
And then, upon the funding piece, one, were we missing something for, I'm guessing this is 25, some of the out years?
Right, take one there, sorry about that. Yeah. So the total allocation is, oh, Mayor, help me with this, is it 3 million? The total set aside? Okay. So, there's certainly plenty of ways to spend that with the downtown revitalization, but these were the ones where there's immediate needs, and we think we've come up with pricing, you know, the costs, pretty quickly. So, yes, 25 through 27, there would be other needs that we just can't identify specifically yet.
That makes sense. All the other comment kind of I had about the figure in 24 to 25, it seems to me, I kind of read on the subject that the county is reticent to fund plans. They seem to want, this is a project, this is a thing that's going to... They, they, they seem to want, this is a project, this is a thing that's going up, this is a thing that we're, we're knocking something down or putting something up. That seems to be what they really want or are, are focusing on, on putting funding toward, at least based on my reads of the budgets over the past couple of years. So I would just kind of constantly think a little bit more about other sources of, I mean, of course, go for it, ask for it, ask for, ask for everything. But, um, you know, looking at potential other sources of funding for the plan aspects of this project, this is what, you know, and this is what's going to exist in the town and the spending.
I, I think that's a really wide observation, prescient, that's been, as we've started to pursue some of those funds, that's the pushback we've, we've received. Um, there's, there's a little bit of a disconnect between, you know, it's like planning, um, like comprehensive plan things versus what we're actually looking for, which is very specific, very granular. Here's our, here's the design standards, here's actually how, how the, the street layout's gonna be and where the park benches are gonna be. And just, the kind of stuff you're gonna need to implement this. But you are hundred percent correct, they're reticent to, so far in our interactions, they've been reticent to, to entertain that. So we're having a look at other sources. We applied for two grants so far, two-ish ones in, in process, so we are looking at other sources.
They're working with Greenwell as well.
I have a question about the, um, the elementary school, so that is now an option for us.
So we've been able to have conversations, so I think having a plan helps move those conversations forward. Where we've gotten that. And, um, I just received, you know, an hour ago, I saw in my email that we have the documents for getting the stone house. So I think we're on, on path, right, for being able to work with the county on county property.
Good deal.
Yeah. Does anyone else have anything for Jason?
I just wanna say, great job on the timeline graph, that looks like it's gonna make things a lot easier, thank you.
Oh, thanks commissioner. So, um, just maybe a parting comment, if that's okay. Um, we, because of your mayor, are not, uh, are not sitting still, sitting idle on this. We have, every week, I think we have something, we're working on a new, a new, uh, part of the process for moving forward, so this is an active discussion and we're actively working on all these things. And so, um, this is not theory, it's something that's important to the mayor and really important to us as well, we don't wanna see this move forward. So, um, this is, we, we feel like there's a lot of, a lot of community support behind this plan and it would be transformative, so. Thanks, all of you, for the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you Jason. Alright, um, we will move on to legal RFP responses. Um, I'm gonna let Corcoran kind of give an overview of, you know, we have a, a simple cost analysis. And we'll talk more in closed session, I did not read the thing saying where we're going, okay, thank you.
Well, the town public's RFP, uh, twenty twenty-three dash certified the town attorney seeking proposals from qualified firms interested in providing legal services to the town of our twenty-four month contract. Uh, the RFP was posted on the town website, began on the e-marketplace, email marketplace and social media. Uh, and as of the closing deadline of Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three by five P M, we received two RFPs. Uh, the one from our current town attorney, the law officer Kevin Day-Best, um, and the other one from Lavanda Ruff, who provides services to our organization currently. Um, both of them are located in Indianapolis. Um, Kevin Best's hourly rate is a hundred and ninety dollars per hour. Um, his copying charges will be, of course, if anything exceeding twenty pages, would be ten cents per page. Uh, with Lavanda Ruff, you're looking at, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars per hour until June thirtieth. And then after that, it'll be two hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour as of July first, twenty twenty-four, for the remainder of the contract. Um, attached, we supply to all of you the RFPs, um, and the, you guys are going to go into closed sessions this evening to discuss them. Um, and the board, boards could vote on it and select a firm at the November regular town meeting on November twenty-eighth.
Are there any general questions, cause specifics, we need to keep in closed session? Alright, we'll move on to, um, reading of the municipal government works month proclamation. We, part of getting our banner city is reading this into the record and this year we'll fill our plaque, which is exciting. Um, would you like to read it into the record?
The proclamation, whereas the town was founded in seventeen oh six and incorporated in eighteen seventy. And whereas Maryland is the home to one hundred and fifty-seven other incorporated cities and towns. And whereas, in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Upper Marlboro is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas municipal enhances the quality of life for their respective residents by providing impactful and needed services directly to individuals, creating a sense of community. Whereas municipalities are critical to implementing policies and programs that support the state of Maryland, making it a great place to live, work, play and explore. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland hereby joins the Maryland Municipal League in declaring November twenty twenty-three to be Municipal Government Works Month in the Town of Upper Marlboro. Signed, Sarah Franklin, President Mayor, Town of Upper Marlboro.
Thank you. Um, and, and along with Municipal Government Works Month, next, at the next town meeting on November twenty-eighth, we are having a teen town hall takeover. So if you have a teenager that would, is interested, this will start at five, is it four thirty or five? Start at four thirty and our department heads will each talk to the teens about what it's like to work in public works, what it's like to work in public safety, what it's like to work in general government. Um, and then we will actually, I, I run these, um, programs for school groups and homeschool groups where the, the teens will get together, they will brainstorm ideas for their community. Um, and then what they'll actually do is we will give them the beginning of our town meeting to come and present their ideas for our community to the Board of Commissioners. And we will consider their idea and put it on our agenda moving forward. So if you have a teen, um, we are giving priority to resident teens, we have three signed up right now. We would love for you to sign up and you can call town hall or email, um, clerk@uppermarlboro.md.gov. Anything else on that? Um, we will move on to administrative updates. Um, December meeting schedule is kind of, I think, the only thing from general government we need to talk about. Um, so with the holidays, we, you know, we don't have a stack of stuff we're trying to get through. So what we were thinking we would do is only meet once in December. The new board is sworn in on December eleventh and Corcoran, if you can tell us what the charter rules and regulations are around that.
The charter says that the board wants to have an organizational meeting in a, in a closed session where you actually go into closed session to select your president mayor as well as the treasurer of the town. Um, once you come out of that, of course, in open meeting, you then vote on your selection for the president mayor as well as the town treasurer. Um, it's also a chance for you to talk about, you know, meetings and regulations, it's also a chance for you to discuss, uh, goals and priorities. So, um, President Franklin and I had discussed possibly doing a session in January on a Saturday possibly, where we could come together and discuss your priorities, which you'd like to do for the, for the, for twenty twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, I should say. Five, um, and that would free that up, um, for the session of that. We also could give you the meeting regulation document ahead of time, because then, you know, here are how you wanna handle the meeting. So we kind of bring up a little bit of that. Um, and that since we would start from twenty, seven thirty and then that by eight o'clock, you could then go in.
And so this would allow us to, instead of having an organizational meeting on December eleventh and then a regular town meeting on December twelfth, we would move everything to December eleventh. The reason I am suggesting this process is because I checked with the two commissioner elects and they have a preference for it. There are three of us who will also be part of this meeting, so what is our preference? Do we want to go with one sort of, one meeting on the eleventh? It might go to nine thirty maybe, but I think we can keep it pretty short. Um, or do we wanna have a meeting on the eleventh and then a meeting on the twelfth? Eleven, eleven? Okay, so there's unanimous support for just having a meeting on the eleventh. So residents of the town swearing in will be at seven thirty. We will begin an organizational meeting at eight o'clock. There will be a point at which we go into closed session and are gone from the room for a few minutes. Then we will come back and reopen an open session and do the business. There may be, this will be a regular meeting, not a work session, cause there may be some items we have to vote on. That covers that. Um, anything administrative from public works? Public safety? Um, we have, I don't know if we have any residents on the line, but I would like to, if the residents would like, we don't, I know we don't have public comment on the agenda, but I think if they would like to provide public comment, um, they can raise their hand if they're online or if you're in, in the room, you can come up to the podium, we'll give you a chance to speak.
Do you want?
Okay.
Uh, there was a mention during the vision plan, um, the, the, uh, person in the presentation referred to it as a high school and you corrected, but he was off the line and said it was an elementary school. It's actually been both. So it is, it is in the national register or in the historic register as the Old Marlboro Elementary School, but it was most recently a high school.
Thank you. Any other hand? Alright. Um, so we'll move on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda.
My show for home starts at number eight, the teen town hall takeover presentation will be made at noon. We decided we're not going to be having a public hearing because we are in the process of revamping the property standards ordinance. Um, so that will not take place. But on ten, we have old business, A, shared parking agreement with Trinity Church for discussion. B, annexation and under eleven, new business, I have resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty, legal contract approval for vote. And B, I have resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, vision plan, action plan for vote. And then we also run and discuss here in the calendar for discussion.
Do you guys wanna add that or are we good with that? I know the Marlboro town roads aren't on there, but I, I know they won't be ready to vote on, so that's why they're not on there. Alright, so that will be our next meeting agenda. Um, at this point, we are going to consider a motion to go into closed session. The board is considering going into closed session following the November work session under general provisions, article three dash three oh five B one, to discuss the appointment, employment assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. And fourteen, before a contract is awarded or bids are open, to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the content of a bid proposal, a public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in a competitive bidding or proposal process. We are proposing to go into closed session to discuss the town administrative position and attorney RFP responses. Is there a motion to go into closed session under these provisions? So, sorry, second. Okay.
President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Culver?
Aye.
Commissioner Henshaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Law?
Aye.
Commissioner Fennor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, we do have one to make the announcement about.
Oh, that's right. So before you leave, um, small business Saturday is November twenty-fifth. We do have small businesses downtown that sell most, we have clothing, we have food. Am I missing anything? We have services which are, um, as well. And we have a whole listing online, so if you check out online, that graphic is up there, you can click on it and you'll see all the businesses downtown. Um, we also have downtown tree lighting and Christmas town market and that is going to be on December second, twenty twenty-three. Commissioner Law, you wanna tell us a little about what's going on there, cause that's your thing?
Well, basically, we're gonna have a ton of vendors come out and, um, we sell, selling their products and we're gonna have, uh, food trucks. And we are now talking about, uh, whether we're gonna have hot chocolate and we're just working out the final details of the hot chocolate cookies or do we have, um,
Some kind of cool giveaway.
Some, yeah, cause we did a giveaway last year, we did the hot chocolate at the, um, at the coffee shop. You had a ticket, you went and had hot chocolate, so we're trying to just work out the final details. So come out and win for us.
It's gonna be fun, one to five.
Brain date is the next Saturday, December ninth.
And, um, residents, if you decorate your home, you will be automatically entered into the holiday decorating contest. The commissioners will, um, select three winners and there will be more information on that, same for businesses. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thanks guys.
Is it a different link for the closed session?
It is a different link for the closed session, I'm gonna go grab my computer and pull it up on there, cause John's gonna stay with us for the-